All right, great, thank you, everybody. Welcome to City of North Bend, Washington City Council Meeting of October 5th, 2021 via virtual meeting. This is our call to order. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
All council members at present, except Councilmember Garcia and Colin, your honor.
Thank you very much. First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. God help second by Mr. Loudon back all in favor?
Hi.
And he opposed. Motion carries and it is unanimous. Next item on our agenda is citizen comments. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine and we'll call upon you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Please start with your name and address for the record. Don, do we have anyone?
I am not seeing anybody yet.
Pause just a moment longer. Okay, no one coming forward. We will move on announcements, presentations and appointments tonight. Item thirteen on your agenda is a presentation on storm season preparations by Mr. Hoffman with Puget Sound Energy. David, I see you in the audience there. You can unmute and we'll hand it off to you.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff and members of the community. My name is David Hoffman and I'm a proud Puget Sound Energy employee. Thank you for this opportunity to share how PSE prepares for storm season. And I will start by sharing my screen if that's possible.
Don, did you give him that permission or do you need to? Okay, thank you.
All right, I, I hope you all can see this screen right here that I'm scrolling over.
We can, thank you.
Excellent. I will get my other screen set up here and away we go. Thank you very much again for your time this evening. I'll start with a quick agenda, just to make sure you all know what we're going to be covering. We'll start off with a safety moment as safety is a paramount priority at PSEs ingrained into our culture. Touch on infrastructure and readiness, how we prepare our infrastructure for storm season. Share some customer resources available. Explain how we go about restoring power in the event of an outage, particularly due to storms. Share some things our customers should know about our restoration efforts. Share how COVID-19 has impacted those efforts. And also touch on outage communications prior to and during storms. And then hopefully have time at the end for some questions. So we'll start off, as I said, with a safety moment. So today we'll talk about downed power lines. If you come across a downed utility wire of any kind, even if you think it is a, a, a communications line, excuse me, assume it is an energized power line and stay as far away as you can. Call 911 or PSE at the number listed there. Do not drive over downed power lines. Please stay in your vehicle if possible, but if you must evacuate, jump away from your vehicle and land with both your feet together and slowly shuffle away to safety. Do not touch your car as you are jumping. That will complete a circuit and could lead to an electrocution. That's why that's very important. So there's your safety moment for today. And then again, a few more safety tips and a place to turn for more information about PSE and our storm preparations, pse.com/storm. It's a great resource and included at that site are videos that are available to the public and to share. So we do have some municipalities that run our videos on their local TV station, which is always helpful to get more information out there. We also provide inform- information for emergency responders, including our energy system restoration plans, which go into a lot of detail, much more detail than I will get into this evening as to how we go about restoring power outages in, in case of emergencies. So when it comes to storm season, storm season, we consider this an all hands on deck type season. We have over 900 employees with emergency response roles, which is just over a third of our employee base. We have seven regional storm bases managing local storm response. And those storm bases coordinate efforts to investigate outages and prep teams to go out and, and restore power. In the case of a major storm or a moderate storm even, we will open our emergency coordination center to coordinate those efforts at a higher level, regional level to make sure that we are utilizing crews and resources as efficiently as possible. And we have dedicated communications teams at both our storm centers and the ECC when there is an ongoing storm. So when we do go about the process of restoring power, we have to prioritize based on several criteria. We prioritize our transmission system first. That's the, those are the big poles and big wires that bring in bulk trends or bulk power to our region. And so we have to make sure that those are restored first, that those are up. And then we follow that down the line essentially to our substations. Ensure that any damage at a substation is completely repaired and we can bring that back online. And then we get to the distribution system, which is really the, the system that brings the power directly to your home and businesses. So as you can imagine, there are a number of other ways that we prioritize our restoration efforts. And part of that comes down to critical infrastructure, hospitals, storm, or sorry, water treatment plants, sewer pumps, other essential services. We ensure that those are up and running, including local emergency management offices. So we coordinate with your emergency management team as well. And after all of that, the last way that we prioritize are those outages. After we've done our investigation, we find out which outages will re, when we restore them will result in the largest number of customers coming back online. So if we have one outage that's affecting 500 customers, we will work on getting that one wrapped up. So those 500 customers can have their power back on compared to an outage with 10 customers, for example. We just have to prioritize based on number of customers. So that's how that works. Another thing that customers should consider and know is as you're watching our efforts, watching our crews out in the field, you might see three different types of vehicles. First would be a PSE damage assessment. This is frequently in a passenger truck or a smaller vehicle where they go out, they look at what the damage is on site and evaluate what is necessary in order to make the repairs. Next you'll see a PSE electric first responder. So they will go out and do a lot of our repair work is done by our PC. EFR is what we call them, electric first response folks. And then if we have larger outages or we need more crews, we will call in our partners at Patelco, who will do heavier line work on transmission lines and some work on our distribution lines as well. If you see a PSE truck pull up, do look like they're taking notes and then they leave that, that can cause some frustration. I've had that happen at my house actually where a PSE truck came in, looked and then left. And I, at the time, didn't know how our restoration work was done. But as it turns out, they were doing their investigation. They were figuring out what pieces of equipment needed to be fixed. And so after that, a crew came back and made the repair. So that's what you will frequently see is an investigation crew come out to look, see what's needed. And then they will call that into the storm base and another crew will be sent out to complete the work. And one thing to note is that PSE has an obligation to clear right of ways prior to restoring power. And that is for other first responders. So your, your police and fire and medics to ensure that they can get through. We've got to make sure that those major thoroughfares are cleared. So if there is a tree that comes down across the line, it's frequently a PSE crew that will clean, clean that up. And we will of course, work in conjunction with city staff and, and city crews as well, who are also out in those same storms working right alongside us. So one thing that is starting to change as we implement advanced metering infrastructure, AMI, is the need to call and report your outage. But we still really have two primary ways that we know that the power is out at your home or business. And that is if you call us and tell us, or if there is a substation that is out. The reason why we would know if it's a substation is because that would, that would mean a transmission line is out and our system operators back at the base would understand and know that that substation is out. But if you have a small outage at your home, we may not know that unless you call us. So please report your power outage. The easiest way is to download the My PSE app right onto your mobile device and log on and you can report an outage at any given time. You can sign up for text alerts for when your power is turned back on. And if you do not have power, once a report has come out and said that you should have power, please call us and let us know that our system is improving. It is not perfect, but it is improving and we're working on it consistently. So your help in that is very much appreciated. Finally, a couple of last things. Our website is a great tool. Again, I mentioned the mobile app. I will touch here on the estimated time of restoration, ETRs, as they are listed on outages and outage notices. The way that we go about that is when we first establish an ETR, it's frequently at a very large or a very high level, excuse me, so a regional level essentially. And what that ETR means is that is our estimated time to restore the last customer in, in this storm. That's not necessarily when your power will, will be restored. Your power will likely be restored much earlier than that, unless you are in a particularly difficult area to get to, or if the system has suffered extensive damage in your area. So we set those big regional ETRs. And then after our crews go in to assess the damage, we will update those ETRs to get a more localized estimated time. And then even past that, we will also get into your specific outage and be able to, once that investigation is complete, we know what resources are needed, we will update your outages ETR to whatever the appropriate time would be based on our cruise estimation. Ways our customers can be prepared is to prepare an emergency kit for your family or for your home. Make sure that you have, excuse me, backup chargers for your cell phones and you have extra batteries. We all have seen the presentations and the ads over the years for three days, three ways. We still push that and support that, encourage our customers to make sure you are prepared for the storm season. And finally, how has COVID-19 affected our restoration plans and efforts? As we prepare, we ask our customers to prepare too. As we are adapting to COVID, our responses have been affected by COVID-19 simply because our crews have to social distance and wear masks. And when you're wearing big, heavy equipment to try to stay safe and restore power, it makes your job a lot more difficult if you're having to wear a face mask, as I'm sure we can all relate to. But we, our crews are, have been great and they are following all of the protocols necessary to protect themselves and our customers. We are continuing to adapt. We still have the avail- the availability to, excuse me, reach out to our sister utilities, even up into Canada and ask for assistance should we need that help in the event of a major storm. But really, in the end, the safety of our customers and our crews is our number one priority. And so that will always take precedent. So with that, I will wrap up. That is my email address, that is my cell phone number. And I encourage you, if you have any questions, council members, of course, we have time for questions, I hope here. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions from the public if they want to reach out as well.
Thank you, David. Council, any council member with a question?
My question was, I just had a comment. Thank you very much for that presentation. I really appreciate the detail and thoughtfulness of it. And again, thank you very much for presenting that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks Brendan, Ross.
Thanks, Mr. Hoffman, very informative. I, I can remember just about a decade ago, sitting in the dark for eight days. And that was not one of our finest hours, but the transmission lines were, were down. And we got to see that complete startup recycle that you presented to us in living color. And you know, it, it's shocking, shocking, I tell you, to find out that North Bend is one, not one of the largest customers that comes online first. But yeah, we, we've grown accustomed to the fact that we do lose power out here. And sometimes it can be days in length. And it's always a good reminder for everybody to keep emergency prepared, preparedness in mind during this time of year. Make sure your supplies are adequate. And if all else fails, get hotel reservations in Arizona. But we appreciate everything the PSE does. You've been a great partner and we look forward to continuing that relationship moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Anyone else? David, I've got a couple of questions. I'm sorry. Mary?
I just wanted to jump, jump in and say thank you, David, for a great, an excellent presentation of depth. I really appreciate it. Tell your crew, keep up the good work and stay safe.
Thank you, I will.
Sorry, sorry, missed you there. Scanning around, the, the, the images are scattered on my screen with the image. David, could you take down the presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Hey, um, one kind of off the, this main topic here, but is, is PSE among the companies that is requiring employee and contractor vaccinations, COVID?
We, you know what, I can get back to you with that because I just saw an email earlier today about that. So if I can respond offline, that, that would be easiest because I'm not prepared to answer that question right now.
Appreciate that. And, and the other one was, and appreciate this is, would you emphasize the non-web based ways to understand what's going on in a power outage since many people don't have access to the web if their power's out?
Yes, that, that's a good question. So I don't have the best answer for you, but again, I can, I can talk to our team and find out what the best resources are, quite frankly, and, and get those out to you and, and hopefully we can get that out to the community. I, I will say this, my manager recently moved out to North Bend. And so he's, he has experienced several of the outages from last winter and, and already going into this fall. So we, we definitely have several folks out in North Bend who experience that and are aware of the challenges in the valley. So.
And we're looking forward to better service than this winter. Great. Wow, last chance for a council member. David, great to see you again. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, council, next on our agenda is introduction, item number fourteen, AB 21-109, resolution authorizing a second amendment to the development agreement between, with Bendigo Properties LLC, Ms. Stemming.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This item went through planning commission and transportation and public works committee reviewed and was originally recommended to go on consent calendar. However, during the process of preparing it for the council, we discovered that the time extension would have put the timeline past the effective date of the development agreement. So it's back on the full agenda calendar because we made an additional change to what was seen previously, which is basically extending the overall duration of the development agreement to June 30th, 2025, to give the time necessary to meet the obligations within the development agreement. And basically what this development agreement does overall, it expen- it extends the timeline required to construct the vault toilet facility serving the development from the original date in October, 2021 to October, 2024, if no sewer is installed. And given the timeframe necessary for the city's completion of the sewer line serving this area through the Meadowbrook sewer, the Meadowbrook U-Lid. So I'll be happy to answer any specific questions. Mark said he would also help with any questions related to the sewer line and the process. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, clarifying questions, Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, Mark, this one might be more for you. We'll leave poor Rebecca alone. She gets the brunt of stuff lately. My recollection was the last time we had talked about this. Originally, actually, they were going to do porta potties until they could bring sewer out. And then we went with ULID. And then I thought I recalled they were going to do a vault until the ULID was set up. Is my recollection wrong or help me out there?
Hmm.
I, I did a little research, so maybe I can't answer that.
Thank you, Rebecca, I appreciate it.
No problem. So the original development agreement basically said that they did the sewer improvements in phase two. And what phase one required was a five-year bond for onsite improvements. Then we went to the first, the first amendment that happened, which basically did allow for the vaulted restroom in, basically the adding a vaulted restroom with a dated deadline instead of the bond because we were expecting the, the U-Lid to come through. And so now basically because there, the restroom facility was always expected to be built in phase two, we're looking for an extension in that time so that it could be either built with phase two with a vault or if the, when, if the sewer comes before phase two is complete, then they would build it with, with directly to the sewer versus with the vault. So it just, it's still supposed to be in phase two, like originally expected. It just depends on when they build phase two, but we put a dated deadline. They're not ready to do phase two yet. So they're asking for more time, probably planning on lining up with the sewer line anyways.
Okay, so if they do phase two, then they have a timeline that has, they have to put a vault in regardless of the ULID.
Correct.
Phase two is no, is not really in the plans right now, am I correct?
They have not started phase two. They are finishing phase one currently.
And do you anticipate this happening in the near future, phase two? Or I mean, how long do we have in porta potties out there?
I haven't talked to the applicant, so I'm, I'm not sure what their schedule for phase two is. I think that's why we originally did put this deadline, but I think we had expected them to start sooner originally on phase one than they did as well. So since the original one was back in 2016 and they just got started this year.
Okay, thanks. I'm just trying to get up to speed and I appreciate that Rebecca and Mark, you're off the hook.
Thanks. Alan, I saw you're in.
Yeah, I guess, so in phase one, it was always intended that they were going to have porta potties?
I can't speak to whether they were going to have porta potties. All I can speak to is it wasn't a requirement for restrooms until phase two in the development agreement.
Yeah, I believe the answer to that is yes, that phase one, just because they're doing ball fields, that they would have landscape screened, honey buckets, porta potties. I don't remember how many there are. It's probably shown on the site plan. There's probably four or five. So those are, those are intended to be temporary.
So how far are we extending? What, what's, what was your original date that we had for the, this? I mean, how far did we move this out?
So we moved it from 2021 to 2024.
And, and that's just to give them time to do phase two or time to see if the ULID is going to get done?
I think it's a little bit of both.
Yeah, I, I, all right, this is just clarifying questions, go on.
Thank you. Any, any other council member clarifying question? Okay. And we'll move to public comment. If you are a member of the public and wish to speak on this particular item, resolution before you, AB 21-109, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on your phone.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion first?
We take public comment before the motion.
Okay.
Wendy Miller, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Wendy Miller. I am, I, my address is 6814 Denny Peak Drive, Southeast Snoqualmie, Washington 98065. We're also the owners of this particular development site, as many of you know. And just for certain clarifying questions, we did have this development agreement. We didn't really realize that it was going to take five years to get through our permitting process in order to get started on our particular project. And once we got started on this particular development, we realized that the development agreement had an expiration date that we did, did need to extend. So nothing from the original development agreement and the first amendment is being changed that has already been agreed upon by the city council. We are just looking for a short-term extension to either A, understand what is going to be happening with the U-Lid, which we think is going to be very successful since there is a lot of support behind this U-Lid over in the Meadowbrook area. Or yes, we will end up building a vault for, for our restrooms. But this is, it is a, a short-term solution to, to understand which route we're going to have to go into. Otherwise, we're building restrooms, which is going to cost us about a million dollars to do. And if the U-Lid ends up passing, it's basically a million dollars that we would have wasted building a vault. So we're hoping that the city council continues to support us and support our project and also support the U-Lid that is hopefully coming up for a vote here soon and, and passes our development agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Don, do we have anyone else?
We do not.
Okay. With that, Alan, another clarifying question? Okay.
So if, if I'm understanding this right, there's an extension to till 2024. But if they go into phase two, does that mean they can build phase two without installing the, the vaults?
Yeah, let's, let's just clarify that, the question directed at staff.
The way I am in, read it and understand it, it's the dates or fully construct all of phase two. So I don't, they can't go past phase two and not construct the restrooms?
Yeah.
That didn't answer my question.
Yeah, let's, let's try.
So you're telling me they can get phase two done and not put in anything, just accommodate phase two with porta potties?
No.
I know, they, if they build phase two, they have to build the restroom, no matter what the date on this development agreement says. It is either the restrooms by the date or at phase two, whichever is sooner.
Mr. Rosen.
Clarifying question. Maybe I'm starting to follow this a little better. Initially, we gave them basically up to five years with the porta potties, assuming by then they would have sewer or something. The permits and everything has taken much longer, I guess, because they haven't even opened and they're looking to extend that. Am I getting this right or not, that we initially gave in five years and that five years is about to expire and they're not yet open?
The original, original was a five-year bond. We gave them till 2021, but I'd have to look at how many years that was when the first amendment was agreed upon. Let me find that date. So in, in 2016, we did a first amendment and gave them till 2021. So yeah, five years.
And they still haven't opened and they're looking to extend that.
Correct, three years, yes.
Yeah, all right, that helps me a little bit, thank you.
Okay. If that's taken care of the clarifying questions, Mr. Loudon back will turn to you as the chair of the committee. This came through for, get a motion on the table.
Thank you, your honor. Motion to approve AB 21-109, a resolution authorizing the second amendment to the development agreement with Bendigo Properties LLC for the Snoqualmie Valley Athletic Complex.
Thank you, do I have a second? I see Ms. Miller indicating a second. All right, Ms. Lautenbach, would you like to speak to the motion, please?
Certainly, this is a, this is a project that's been going on for quite some time. We've had our ups and downs and our permit issues and processing. And, uh, I, uh, personally appreciate the, uh, tenacity of the applicant to continue forward with the project. We are, uh, almost at the end of phase one, looking at the fields. It's, uh, it's very exciting and encouraging and I look forward to being able to go out and tour the facility as soon as it's complete. Uh, the extension in my mind is, uh, is warranted. I think that we are gonna get a, a fine finished product. It will either have a vault or be connected to a ULID sewer, which would be the preference. Uh, the, uh, the vault, while possibly achievable, is, uh, you know, in, in a high water table area. And we would certainly prefer to see a tight line sewer in that application. And I look forward to, uh, hopefully having the support of my fellow council members for granting the extension. There will be porta potties, they will be well maintained so that when you're out there cheering on your children or your spouse or yourself, uh, at the athletic facility, uh, you will be able to take care of when mother nature calls. And, uh, we will make sure that it is done in a, in, in the proper fashion. And we will not allow any subsequent phases to move forward with porta potties. They will be functioning full facilities. So I would recommend to do pass and, uh, that's about it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, you were the second. Would you pause a moment? I see Ms. Deming's hand, I think she wanted to provide some additional information.
Yeah, I, and I just wanted to apologize, I was reading the wrong date in the first agreement. It was in 2020, we basically gave them two years on to do this part and now they're asking for three more. So I just wanted to correct, I misspoke, I misread the date in the wrong area.
And I think all of us can also appreciate the fact that, uh, they wouldn't be the only major construction project in the valley to have suffered from COVID. Would they?
There've been a few others, thank you. Uh, Ms. Miller, you were the second.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ross, you spoke eloquently about this project and I thank you for that, so I don't want to add too much more. However, I wanted to say that Wendy, um, thank you for, for stepping up and being at every meeting that this discussion of your, um, excellent athletic facility, uh, coming into fruition, um, is all about. That further, uh, gave me information today. Thank you to the staff for, um, having some more deeper input to, uh, what it takes to pull this off. Much appreciated. And also they were gonna open up this week, but due to weather, that did not happen. So they're pushing forward and I highly recommend that we go forward with this.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to speak to the motion? Mr. Godell.
Based on something Ross just said brings up a concern. Are we concerned that the water table there is so low that they wouldn't be able to get involved if we don't run sewer there?
Mr. Regos.
No, there, there's ways, Alan, to anchor vaults down with more steel. And you design special footings so it doesn't float, but it just adds to more cost, more concrete, more steel. Sometimes they have to be shallower, so they're not so deep. So it's a, it's an expensive, uh, operation designing and constructing a, a vault, uh, for sewer.
Thank you. Good Alan, any more? Okay, anyone else? Uh, Mr. Elwood.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I was trying to raise my hand, but instead I did a clapping hand, so the emojis are failing me. Um, I, I think just to put it simply in my brain, I know some of the discussions that we had back and forth many moons ago was just a general concern about how long outhouses will be there before proper facilities would be up and functioning. Um, can somebody just very concisely tell me what that timeline will be with, uh, outhouses? Is it another three years with outhouses? Or I know it's a first, phase two is gonna come when phase two comes, but i- is there some sort of predictable timeline? Um, when the outhouses go away?
Ms. Deming?
So yes, basically what you're approving is an extension on that timeline that it is, under this current one, would be October 31st, 2024 is when they need to construct and would, you know, complete, when they would construct. And then the, uh, then the outhouses would go away once complete.
So effectively, we're saying by approving this extension, we're permitting outhouses to be the facilities that are available at that site, which will be properly screened for the next three years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It could be sooner with a ULID completion.
That's true, thank you for that.
And Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, um, just if we're gonna go with outhouses for that longer period, um, what is the language, uh, for screening? And, uh, just how are we gonna make this look halfway decent?
I was not involved in the original approval of phase one, which would have included that discussion of screening. And I don't, because it's not in the development agreement, I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're gonna at least make sure it's properly screened and so forth, since it's gonna be there for three, four years.
Yeah. Um, I think, um, uh, that was part of the original agreement. My understanding is that's in the construction plans, but of course, staff here does not have that. If you'd like, I can, uh, ask the applicant, speak back up, who's probably much more, uh, knowledgeable than any of the rest of us. Would you like that, Mr. Rosen?
That would be great and helpful, appreciate it.
Uh, Wendy, if you're still there, would you please, uh, uh, if, and if you can enlighten us on that particular point? Can, would you unmute and answer?
Sure, and I do have to apologize, I'm actually, um, in Seattle getting ready to go into a concert, so I apologize for any background noise. Um, but yes, um, we went through some very, very rigorous, um, review process when it came to these, um, porta potties during this period of time. And so it is, um, there, there's actually eight porta potties that will sit on top of a concrete pad and is completely fully fenced in with a wood fence with also some foliage to, um, completely cover the area. So frankly, other than a sign that says restrooms, um, you would never know that, um, those, those porta potties are actually there. They will be quite covered and they are actually also on the interior of the site. So you, you will not be able to see these from the street in any way, shape or form.
Thank you. Any other council member have, uh, comments, questions related to this? Seeing none. Uh, the motion before you is to approve AB 21 dash 109, a resolution authorizing the second amendment to the development agreement with Bendigo Properties LLC for the Snoqualmie Valley Athletic Complex. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Hey, motion carries, uh, we, with Mr. Godell, uh, against. Thank you very much. Um, next on our agenda tonight, mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives. Um, first I will look to council. Um, Alan, would you lead us off?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Ross?
Well, we can't let such an auspicious meeting go without recognizing certain significant dates occurring in this week. Uh, certainly, uh, yesterday, uh, Mr. Godell's birthday, today, Mr. Elwood's birthday. And, uh, I just want to say that, uh, it, it's rare, but a, a privilege to have you taking time from your celebratory weeks to be with us tonight. And thank you very much and happy birthday, gentlemen. 29 again for both of you, I don't know how you do it.
Thank you. Uh, Mary?
Oh, I have nothing to say but happy birthday to both of you wonderful guys.
Thank you. Um, well, let's see, it better go to Mr. Rosen.
Um, nothing tonight, I'm good.
Thank you. Uh, birthday boy.
Is that me?
That's you. You're today.
Well, well, thank you for the, uh, praises there to my colleagues, I appreciate that. Um, and thank you, Suzie, for sending me a great email earlier this morning. I do appreciate that. Um, yes, uh, I do have one comment. Um, we've, as I mentioned in our last session, have opened a new community theater venue here in the Sno- North Bend in partnership with Salao Grange. Our opening weekend, uh, which was a mad dash to the finish line to make sure everything's set and ready for public safety and codes and all that was great. And it was a success, so that was awesome. And this last weekend, we had really good showing out for our show, which is the Mousetrap. It was a Friday, Saturday, Sunday production, we had 25 to 30 people in the house, so that was really good. So if you haven't, uh, come out yet or are un, uh, informed about what's going on, look at the Salao Grange, drive by it, we're trying to do all sorts of cool stuff there. It's a nonprofit organization, we're in partnership, we have many other things coming down that venue. So please pop in and support your local performing arts, support the Salao Grange by attending these productions. Uh, and so that's just my, 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 my hope and final words, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, as, uh, as you're all aware, uh, Mr. Miller is away, uh, uh, this week at a conference and is not with us, should point out, it was also his birthday yesterday, so, uh, congratulations to him. Uh, and with his absence, I'm gonna just touch quickly and base with, uh, each of the deputies to see if they have anything they want to share. Uh, Mr. Regos?
I'm good tonight, thanks.
Ms. Deming?
I don't have anything tonight.
Ms. Masco?
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, great, thank you all. A few notes, uh, from before we move on. Last Saturday shredded event at City Hall was a success with over 50 visitors, bringing many boxes of documents for secure recycling. Thank you to Public Works Office Coordinator, Carrie Smith, for organizing and staffing this event. And, uh, kudos and double down on, on thank you to Carrie, she does a lot of this stuff for us and they always come off really well. Um, a reminder to residents that City Hall will be closing at 11:30 AM this Thursday and will remain closed through the remainder of the day for an all staff training event. City Hall will reopen on Friday morning at 8:30 AM. The Blues Wall will be held Saturday, October 16th, from 6 PM to midnight. I didn't know it was going out late. In downtown North Bend, the event features 17 locations with 22 bands and more than 100 musicians. For more information about the event, including how to purchase tickets, please visit the news section of the city website. I'm particularly excited about this event, I want everybody to be safe, practice your COVID protocols, but enjoy some great music as we come out to celebrate. Drug Takeback Day will be held on Saturday, October 23rd, from 10 AM to 2 PM at City Hall. The public is encouraged to bring their expired, unwanted or unused prescription medications for safe disposal. Again, more information about this event is available in the community calendar on the city website. And finally, the City of North Bend Downtown Foundation will be hosting a trick or treat street on Saturday, October 30th, from 2 to 6 PM. This free event features live music and trick or treating at businesses in the downtown area. Also happening at that same day is Sideview, uh, Metro Park's Harvest Festival from noon to 4 PM at the Sideview Park and the Halloween Train at the North Bend Depot. More information about all of these events and other happenings in the valley are available by visiting Discover North Bend website. So there's some nice positive news to end the evening here with you tonight. At this time, council is going to move into executive discussion, uh, session to discuss performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1G. Um, and so, Don, if you would allow the guests and, um, non-executive staff to leave the meeting?
And stop. Announce, announce how long you expect it to occur, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, and the executive session is expected to last no more than 45 minutes and there will be no action following the meet, the session. Thank you, Don.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Motion to adjourn in a second. Any opposed, Chris isn't here, I bet it's unanimous, thank you, everybody.
Nay.
Good night, everybody.